Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Hillsborough Township Planning Board Meeting of October 28th, 2021. Please join me in a salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic of America, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be advised this meeting has been duly advertised according to Section 5 of the Open Public Speaking Act, Chapter 231 Public Law 1975, otherwise known as the Sunshine Law. Notice of the 2021 Annual Meeting Schedule has been provided to the officially designated newspapers, the township clerk, posted on the township website, and available at the Hillsborough Township Municipal Complex. Further notice that's been provided to the saying that as of July 1st of this year, the remainder of the 2021 Planning Board meetings will be held in person here at the Peter J. Behandi Building. Live virtual participation will no longer be available. In addition, application documents have been made available on the township's civic clerk website or portal. Complete application files are available in the planning and zoning department for inspection in accordance with the public meeting notice. And with that, you're going to be the acting secretary?
I'm, yes.
Okay. You don't get anything extra for it?
I didn't expect to.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Wagner?
Here.
Mr. Delkor is absent. Mr. Peason?
Here.
Mr. Santa Marita?
Here.
Mr. Scobbo?
Here.
Mr. Hashtag?
Here.
Mr. Chickarelli?
Here.
Mr. Emick is absent. Vice Chairman Julian?
Here.
Mayor Lepani?
Present.
Chairman Sarachi?
Here.
We have a quorum. Mr. Maskey?
Here.
Myself, Mr. De Sessa?
Here.
And smiling.
And behind the cameras.
And behind the cameras, the man controlling.
Okay. So before we begin, for those that have been to our meetings in the past, we do not have our stenographer this evening, so we're going to be relying on video and audio. So to ensure that, you know, when we do, you know, have the meeting minutes put together, I'm just going to ask folks to just please be patient, let the person speaking finish speaking, and not to speak over each other. And prior to you speaking, identify who is speaking. Okay? So with that, we do not have any meeting minutes. However, we do have resolutions for consideration. First one is Green Care Farms LLC, Rosiski File 19-PB-2-SV. May I have a?
Mr. Chairman, all members of the board present are eligible to vote.
Thank you. May I have a motion to approve?
Peason will make a motion.
Scobbo, second.
Okay. Are there any comments? Hearing done. Roll call, please.
Mr. Peason?
Yes.
Mr. Scobbo?
Yes.
Mr. Wagner?
Yes.
Mr. Santa Marita?
Yes.
Mr. Hashtag?
Yes.
Mr. Chickarelli?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Julian?
Yes.
Mayor Lepani?
Yes.
Chairman Sarachi?
Yes. Next, we have Ernest and Tina Park, File 21-PB-12-SV. May I have a motion to approve?
Same.
Saying, oh, everyone's eligible.
Yes.
Thank you.
So moved.
Wagner?
Hashtag, second.
Okay. Any comments? Hearing done. Roll call, please.
Mr. Wagner?
Yes.
Mr. Hashtag?
Yes.
Mr. Chickarelli?
Yes.
Mr. Santa Marita?
Yes.
Mr. Scobbo?
Yes.
Mr. Peason?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Julian?
Yes.
Mayor Lepani?
Yes.
Chairman Sarachi?
Yes. We do not have any planning board business. So next would be business from the floor for items that are not on this evening's agenda. So if anyone from the public would like to provide comment to the planning board on items on this evening's agenda, you may please come forward. Okay? Looks like everyone's here for the agenda. So we will move on. There are no ordinances for consideration, so we will move on to this evening's application with File 21-PB-13-MSV, Block 152, Lot 3, Farm Road, applicants seeking preliminary and final major subdivision approval. See both variances and waivers to subsidize subdivide 3.883 acres into three residential lots with associated improvements on property in the R residential zone. And I believe the Environmental Commission has already reviewed this file on September 27th of this year. And with that, I will turn it over to you, counselor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Jim Stahl.
Mr. Stahl, you need to move the microphone close to yourself so that the, as I said, the only important person, who's the man behind the camera, can hear for the purpose of the video. So thank you.
Thank you. I assume our notices are in order?
Yes, they are. I will indicate for the purpose of the record, our office has reviewed the notices submitted, and they are acceptable. Let me also indicate by the record that at 7:37, Deputy Mayor Delkor arrived. Stahl, yours.
As I indicated, Jim Stahl, S-T-A-H-L, the firm is board called Paulie Viall, I'm Paul, North Bend, New Jersey, and with Mr. Peter Lanford, who is my alter ego, is a partner, but so he, hold on, sorry, I'm sorry.
All right. Wait, wait, he's.
As indicated, you all, you see Peter often, or on occasion, his alter ego, I'm here tonight. Last time I think Mr. Ford and I were here together was pre-COVID, so it is our pleasure. I have one witness that I intend to call, Mr. Ford, who will testify as to the proposed use to subdivision and the necessary proofs for the variances and the waiver. I do have Mr. Kurt Ludwig, L-U-D-W-I-G, who is the architect, is here, but unless your gentleman wanted to hear something, I'd rather he keep silent. But he's here for any questions on the building, or setbacks, or any of that nature. I would indicate to you that I make the representation, my clients, the Yankases, intend to obtain this subdivision and build a house for their own purposes to live there. As to the other two lots which will be described by Mr. Ford, they have made no decision as to whether they could sell them, keep them in the family for family members, or sell them with an approval. I can take that representation to you. They are not, they're not here to speculate, if you will, because they just don't know what to do with the other two buildings. Mr. Ford, I would call Michael Ford as my first and only witness.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman. Can I just correct something for the record? The Environmental Commission heard the applicant last Monday, which was October 25th. Originally, it was scheduled for the September 27th, but you didn't have a quorum, so we just heard it recently. So I just wanted to note that for the record. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes. Come on, meet tonight, Michael. Is the testimony you're about to give the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth to help you, God?
Yes, it is.
State your full name, spell your last name for the record, and by whom you are employed.
Yes, Michael Ford, F-O-R-D, Dan Cleef Engineering Associates, 32 Brower Lane, Hillsborough, New Jersey, Licensed Professional Engineer and Planner in the state of New Jersey, and I've appeared before this board on numerous occasions.
As both an engineer, professional engineer, and a professional plan, am I correct?
Yes.
I would ask that Mr. Ford be qualified as an expert in both professional planning and professional engineering.
It's accepted. We have seen, I don't want to say too far, but we've already seen him earlier this month, so.
If you will, Michael, I, you know, you and I do not do a Q and A, so I'd like to just indicate to the board first the existing conditions as we have them today, and then the closer.
Closer.
Jim.
You need to move, you know, you need to move the mic closer.
Keep the mic right next to you.
Like, right here.
I can.
So the man cannot hear when you're actually done speaking.
Thank you. All right. Mr. Ford?
Okay.
Be pleased, as I indicated, to describe to the board the existing conditions that exist right now, and what the proposed development is.
Okay.
Any, both the waivers and the variances required.
Okay. I'll be using the exhibit that's on the screen now, which is a copy of the preliminary funnel subdivision plat, colorized with the proposed architecture turned on, or I'm sorry, landscaping turned on. And the subject of this evening's application is the development of a parcel of land that's been described, which is currently vacant, essentially wooded on the east side of Farm Road, just south of the Farm Road intersection with Valley Road.
We're going to mark this A1, Michael.
Yes, please. It's in the R zoning district residential. What's being proposed are three lots, one acre lot, a 1.35 acre lot, and a 1.42 acre lot. The two rear lots are over an acre. And what's being proposed, that I'll say is somewhat unique for this application, is that rather than a public road servicing the three new lots, we're proposing essentially two flag lots with two 25-foot wide strips of land. All three lots have frontage on Farm Road. The two rear lots have a 25-foot width of land on Farm Road. And then the one lot closest to Farm Road has a frontage of 145 feet. The all three lots would be serviced by a common driveway within an easement on the, what I'll call the flag pole portion of the rear right-hand lot. That is the southeast lot. And they'll all be serviced by public water and sewer. Public water is in Farm Road already. That's New Jersey American Water. And public sewer is in Valley Road, just to the north of the subject site. And we would be extending that sewer main up to service the three lots. So they would be serviced by public water and sewer. Part of the application, because of its unique layout, requires variances. There are four in total. Two are for the two rear lots, where one acre minimum lot size is required in the R zone. However, if you propose a flag lot, the minimum required lot acreage jumps to three acres. So we would require variances for the two rear lot areas. And then the frontage along Farm Road for the one lot that's closest to Farm Road is just shy of the minimum lot frontage, because that's its only frontage. It's public road frontage on Farm Road at 145 feet versus 150 feet required. The fourth variance is with regards to total impervious coverage, and that is for the southeasterly lot, where I described the common driveway runs down the 25-foot pole portion of that flag lot. And because that common driveway encumbers a substantial portion of that lot, that lot would require a lot variance for impervious coverage where 15% is permitted, and 25%, 25.74% is posed for that lot. You can see that it's essentially because of the common driveway being all on that portion of that one lot, where the impervious coverage on that lot is greater than the other two lots, which would comply with the 15% maximum.
Now, Michael, the road that you described, the driveway, that would be maintained by an association, is that correct?
Correct.
It would not be maintained by the township, snow plowing, maintenance, paving, repair, et cetera, with all these under a association, is that correct?
Correct. And maybe what I can show is an example or an exhibit of a prior application which shows what would be, I'll say, a more traditional conforming application or proposal, but would carry with it the dedication of a public road. And I'm going to go to a second exhibit, which we can call A2.
Do you want to describe what A2 is?
A2 is a preliminary subdivision plan prepared by Styers Associates. It's Sheet 3 of 13. It's dated April 12th, 2006. And I understand that it was part of a prior application on this property. But I'd like to just describe as part of this illustration is what would be a more traditional subdivision, where it would be a dedicated public right of way. There would be three one-acre lots, so there would be no variance for lot area. What I think is the detriment to this aspect while being more conforming from a zoning standpoint is that just the service access for these two rear lots, you're providing a pretty substantial public improvement that would be owned and maintained by the township as opposed to a homeowners association for those two lots. And then also additional impervious coverage. And because of the setbacks, that is, the setbacks from the public road, and I'm highlighting them now, the front yard setbacks for the, for the public road, it would force the building envelope for those two rear lots more to the rear of the subject parcel, or to the east, closer to our neighbors to the east. And now I'll go back to A1 and highlight what we believe are the benefits to the deviation from the zoning. Here, we have the two houses and the driveway smaller, the two houses closer to Farm Road, and we have a substantial area beyond the houses near our closest neighbors to the east. And one of the discussions we had with the Environmental Commission Monday evening was the, while not required by ordinance, but the proposal and a request by the Environmental Commission members to preserve about a 50-foot swath of land along our easterly track boundary that's not to be disturbed now, it's not within our limits of disturbance. And the applicants would agree to provide for that conservation easement so that it would protect that existing buffer between the new two rear houses and our neighbors to the east. So that would preserve that, that existing vegetation.
Mike, I understand that for the board or any other individuals in the room, that would be a no-build area, that would be a conservation easement, to which would not be permitted construction of pools, structures, et cetera. Am I correct?
That's correct.
Mike, you might as well chime in on that.
Sure.
So, yeah, I mean, we had talked about what Mr. Ford had talked about, and the reason was, was we were concerned about the neighbors behind off of dipmars. So what we wanted to kind of talk about and address was an ability to stabilize that slope in the back, so that you just didn't get runoff. And I'm sure we'll talk about the stormwater issues later, but that was something that we talked about Monday night in terms of stabilizing the slope, preventing the runoff. And by making it a conservation area, once the slope is there, hopefully it would be able to do that.
Correct. And perhaps now I can talk about stormwater runoff. The proposed private driveway would be curbed. So while right now, essentially, the property drains in a northerly direction, that is, from the southern border toward the north, there is just off-site a swale that runs through one of our neighbor's property. And the stormwater management facilities would be first to provide for a curbed driveway, and that is to intercept all the runoff from our site, this house closest to Farm Road, and the private driveway, so that it doesn't continue to run sheet flow across our closest neighbor, if you will, the other house fronting Farm Road to the north of the subject site, and collect that stormwater runoff, which would then be directed to an underground stormwater management system that would be, has been designed in accordance with the state standards. That is, not just for quantity control of stormwater runoff, but also for quality and recharge, because we do have what we refer to as dirty water, that is runoff from paved surfaces as opposed to roofs, where that runoff is not required to be treated for quality. So the, all three aspects of the stormwater management requirements would be addressed. We actually received a review memorandum from the board's engineer dated October 25th, 2021. It has four pages of comments, report to the board, and each and every one of those comments would be addressed to your engineer's satisfaction, with the exception of two items, one being, or actually just one, item three under general comments is a factual reference to the traditional layout of subdivision with a public road and dedication for a public road as opposed to this application concept, where we're proposing a private driveway to be owned and maintained by the homeowners association. And that would include the driveway and the stormwater management aspects of the driveway. And then there was one comment under the stormwater management features under item two, where there's a reference to our calculations, which utilize infiltration for the routing of the water quantity storm in a reference to the BMP manual. We believe there's actually an element within the state's BMP manual that we qualify for, where we can use recharge. Certainly, since receiving this memorandum, we haven't had an opportunity to go through all those detailed calculations with your board engineer. But again, that item two, we would address to their satisfaction. That is, if we don't qualify under the BMP manual for utilizing infiltration for the quantity calculations, will eliminate the use of infiltration for the quantity calculations and size the basin appropriately. And we have made application to other review agencies, including the Delaware and Rare and Canal Commission. And you know full well that they look at stormwater management elements in detail as well. And that would certainly be a condition of any board that, any approval this board may grant satisfying, not only your board engineer, but all the outside agencies, including the Delaware and Rare and Canal Commission. While I'm speaking of outside agencies, we have already made application to the Somerset County Planning Board, received their approval on July 23rd, 2021, as well as an application to the Somerset Union Soil Conservation District, and received their approval on September 9th, 2021. And we have a pending application with the New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection for a freshwater wetland presence-absence. That is, the state GeoWeb doesn't show any wetlands on the site. There's actually wetlands shown on, as your engineer referenced in his review memorandum, on a property, Lot 1, which is to the north of us. So there's no wetland shown on this property. We believe there is no wetlands on the property, and we've sought to confirm that with NJDEP.
Before you go on, I just want to confirm the impact, if any, on the adjoining property owners. You've indicated with regard to the immediately adjoining property to the north of that first lot, that not only will the storm drainage be eliminated from where it was coming from, but we're addressing that in our underground features. Am I correct?
That's correct. Yeah, that right now, stormwater from this site would be permitted to sheet flow across that property, as well as our other neighbor to the north. What we're proposing as part of our stormwater management is all our impervious surfaces and other land disturbances would be collected in a stormwater management system along our private driveway, which would be curbed. So the only real strip of land that would continue to drain to the north would be this small, onto the neighbor just to the north, would be this small strip of land between the private driveway and the neighbor to the north. And then it's all directed to the underground basin. And then there's a discharge for the underground basin and an existing swale along our northerly boundary.
And again, just for simplicity, so bear with me. I mean, there is no retention or detention. There's no basin. It is all collected in an underground facility. Is that correct?
Correct. Yeah, the underground facility is a detention basin. It's just underground. You won't see it above ground. Yeah. Yeah.
I mean, it has, it detains it, but it releases it.
Correct.
So I don't want to harsh words here, so.
Right. That's our stormwater management. The whole premise of stormwater management for quantity is to provide a storage volume where the additional runoff is captured, held back, and released at a controlled rate from that underground basin with that volume through an outlet structure that releases it at a rate less than the existing condition. That is, we're required to reduce the two 10 and 100-year storms in accordance with the regulations. Perhaps lastly, what I'd like to describe is with regards to land disturbance, tree impact, a, the application, as I stated earlier, is for a parcel of land that's essentially 100% woods. So in order to construct the private driveway, the three new houses, there's land disturbance in excess of the 20% maximum allowed by ordinance for a residential project of the existing wooded areas. We are proposing a tree mitigation plan and plantings as part of the application, and we have applied the economic hardship waiver element within the tree mitigation ordinance, where we're required per the economic hardship waiver to plant 93 trees, and what we're proposing is 97 trees. And we're endeavoring to balance the disturbance of the land with regrading in order to provide for proper drainage and grading and divert stormwater to the proposed detention basin, while also endeavoring to minimize our disturbance to the existing woods. That's an asset, you know, to the future homeowners as well, to preserve those trees. So that is part of our application, that relief for the tree mitigation. And I think that sums up.
Can you uncover the plan because?
I can. All right. We, I did speak to the October 25th memorandum by your engineer. I don't know if you want to discuss that further. Okay, let's go through it. Thanks. All the other items in the engineer's review memorandum would be addressed to his, you know, their satisfaction. The only item, as I stated earlier, is that general comment number three, where we would prefer not to provide for a traditional layout as illustrated in Exhibit A2 with the public road dedication. And then with regards to, under stormwater management, item two would be subject to their approval, that we do comply with the NJDEP BMP, Best Management Practice Manual regarding the utilization of infiltration as part of our calculations. And if that's not met to their satisfaction, we would modify the calculations not to utilize that one element of exiting routing from the basin. We have also received an October 26th, 2021 memorandum from Mr. Weniger, your fire official. He doesn't have any objections to the proposal as far as layout and access for emergency vehicles. He does state that the fire hydrant is required, the exact location must be approved by the chief fire marshal, and all fire hydrants must be marked and installed in accordance with the Hillsborough Township Code, Section 11. with the Hillsborough Township Code Section 166-17. And then as per NJAC, uh, five, semicolon, 70-3, 11412.1, the approved fire hydrant must be installed and approved prior to any combustible constructing, construction materials arriving on site. And we would agree to comply with their requirements.
All right. Just before we move off the memo, so with the fire hydrants, they're going to be paid and then the cost of maintenance will be part of the whole most association?
Okay. And then there's a, uh, I think our last review memorandum is a September 23rd, 2021 review memorandum by Mr. Maskey, your planning director. Uh, I have described already the application, the proposed use, uh, residential use is in compliance with permitted uses within the R-zone with regards to the bulk standards and design of the application. I have highlighted and, uh, identified the four variances required as part of the application, bulk variances, uh, and, um, provided, uh, an explanation as to, uh, the lot area variances for the two rear lots, uh, and the frontage variance for the lot fronting Farm Road where they could be eliminated by providing for a public road, uh, with a dedication to the township for that road. But our preference would be this private, uh, improvement, uh, option. And then, uh, the impervious coverage variance for the one lot, uh, is attributed to the fact that that one lot has on it the, uh, substantial portion of impervious cover associated with the access driveway. Under item five, the pre- tree preservation plan, uh, I've identified the relief sought with regards to the percentage of trees to be removed and also the application of the economic hardship waiver that's requested by the applicant. And then with regards to, um, frontage improvements, uh, we are on, uh, Farm Road. We're not proposing any sidewalk or street trees along Farm Road. Um, there is no sidewalk to the north or south on our side of the road, but that would be a board, uh, I think, decision as to whether they would want us to install the sidewalk along our frontage as well as street trees, or would they perhaps want a contribution in lieu of, or no sidewalk at all. And then, uh, we will provide for, uh, proper lines of sight on our driveway. And, um, I have described already the, uh, elements of the required street trees, and I would defer to the board as to which direction they would prefer we go.
And Michael, just without me giving a planning testimony, the trade-off of the owner applicant creating a private road maintained by an association, taking away the expense of maintenance of that road, uh, is one of the positive features. Is that correct?
That and the, and the element of being able to locate the two houses on the rear lots closer to Farm Road, farther away from our, uh, neighbors to the east, and giving us the opportunity to provide for that conservation easement. And what I would also say is there may be some board members that are familiar with a prior application for a property just to the south of this property on Farm Road known as the Lutzke application, where we actually came in with a traditional dedicated road and cul-de-sac. And, uh, part of the conditions of approval was to, to not do that, to have a private road and no dedication to the town. So we're consistent with that prior.
And Michael, this being a permitted use residential zone, do you find any negative, uh, impacts on the community or the ordinance or the master plan?
No, the, the project would be the same if the public road was proposed. It would just have with it more disturbance and more impervious coverage.
Thank you, Michael.
That's, that's all I have of this witness, I think.
Thank you.
Chairman, just, uh, following up on the, uh, street trees and, uh, sidewalks, uh, Mr. Ford brought up the Lutzke subdivision just to the south. And I don't recall offhand if we did require a sidewalk and street trees as part of that subdivision. If we did, I would strongly recommend that this, uh, application provide the extension of that sidewalk and the street trees. But we could check that.
Okay.
David, along same lines, did that application have similar variances?
Well, it wasn't for flag lots, no. Uh, and, and just for, for clarification, Mr. Ford has referenced the, the prior application on this, that it's a, it was a public road. The Lutzke application was a traditional street or road, but it was not public. It's a private road. So let's make that distinguish, distinguish between the two. You can have a road. It doesn't have to be public. And we all, as the board has required in other cases, um, all the roads are private.
Mr. Chair, can I follow up with that stormwater?
Yes.
So, um, yeah, we met at the environmental commission Monday night. Uh, Chair Person Boye hadn't had a chance to file a report, so there was a couple of items that came up that I just wanted to follow up on. We talked about, um, the conservation easement and stabilizing the slope. The, the stormwater, um, because it's a private HOA and a private road, we reviewed the stormwater plan and recommended that, um, in accordance with the Hillsborough Stormwater Permit, that a maintenance plan be, um, developed so that each year the stormwater detention basin, the storm grades are kind of reviewed and gone over with a report submitted to the township on an annual basis so that the stormwater system is well maintained with best management practices. Because it's a private road, there's really going to be no, you know, nobody from the town kind of looking at it. So the onus would fall on the HOA to do that. Um, so that's what, uh, we discussed and that's what we recommended.
You could, Mr. Chair, we could prepare a stormwater maintenance agreement, much the same as the county requires from time to time. This one would be a, a two-party agreement between the homeowners association and the township. And, you know, we worked it out with council.
Yeah, we agreed to do that at the environmental commission. And the town actually already has an ordinance that for these types of stormwater management facilities, there's an annual reporting submitted to your engineering department that, uh, documents the condition of the system. And, um, unlike other systems, this is, we're not utilizing porous pavement here. It's standard pavement, would be an underground basin and a mechanical treatment device providing the water quality. So, and as the applicant's attorney just said, we actually already prepared a operation and maintenance manual, and, um, that could be filed and recorded at the county clerk's office so that any property owner that would be part of this project would be aware of the obligation.
Okay. Any additional comments?
Um, so in beginning your testimony, I think that you said that the, the property owns intends just to build one home as of right now?
Yeah. Yeah, the, uh, the applicant's actually walked in. They're, they're here now. Uh, so the, the applicant proposes to build the house on the rear left-hand property.
And then, so I guess my question is, um, if they're not speculating to, to build the other two for any foreseeable future, why would they need to then, uh, you know, clear the lots, possibly leave them wooded until those, those lots are developed? And at that point, we know what's being built and what trees actually need to be taken down so as to prevent the, the disturbance of land until you need to have that disturbance done? I mean, it's, you know, it could be a year from now or 10 years from now. But if, uh, if they're only planning to put one house in and at some point build another house, why do all that work now? A, to save money, and B, to just prevent the disturbance of the land?
Mayor, it's a good question.
Yeah, the, uh, I think that you're right. I think that the limited disturbance doesn't have to be staked out day one and all of it disturbed day one. It could be, uh, staged, if you will, where the, the, the limits of disturbance required to build the access driveway and the one house that's initially built, that's disturbed. And if and when the other lots are developed, those other areas could be, you know, disturbed as well. There's no need to disturb it all at one time. And that, I think, would be a condition we could agree to, and that would be placed on the plans so, so that, you know, they don't get disturbed if, if until those lots are developed.
I think it would be good to have that in the resolution of approval as a condition so there's no question later on, if someone, a change in personnel and someone says, well, you were supposed to do all site improvements at the same time. I think that's right. I think we should do it as, as and when needed.
Well, I, I mean, obviously you need to build the driveway and the, and the stormwater management system as if it was all there.
Right.
Correct.
But the disturbance of all the acres and the trees and the clear cutting can be, can be done upon the, the site approval. Okay. Um, well, that's great. Thank you for that. Um, so, uh, my, my second question, and this is, this is to the, maybe to, to Drew, are you satisfied with the plan and stormwater mitig- that they've designed to, to withstand the mitigation of what we're looking for?
Yeah, the, the stormwater design, um, is, is acceptable. It's in compliance or it will be after we get some of the comments addressing compliance with the standards. Um, I just, with, with the phasing of a job like you're speaking about, I'm just concerned that I don't know if it would be possible not to disturb the rest of the, not the rest, but some of the other lots, which is the construction of the other lot, because the other, the lot in the, the left rear is, is proposed to be about an eight-foot fill there in order to make the drainage work on the road and the, the surrounding area. It may be necessary to go into the other lots more than, um, more than just up to the edge of, let's say, the proposed road. So I would just be concerned that even, even though they only built one lot, they, the, the grading is such that it doesn't cause, uh, drainage problems, uh, on the rest of the property. Because right now it's designed as a whole, as a whole subdivision, and you have, uh, some, some areas that, you know, grading that depend on, you know, the area is off the lot to be graded as well.
So I guess we could minimize the disturbance to whatever was required to, to do the water mitigation properly.
Yeah, it would just be that they would have to then ensure that the overall, the grading, uh, doesn't impact the, the drainage even on the property, like causing standing water on the other lots because they haven't been graded out because this one lot is so much higher than the surrounding area.
Without being covered, I think in the permit process also, and the, the engineer working, and Michael working with it, I mean, I agree, we should not expand the limits of disturbance except as required either for the drainage system or for the street.
Okay. Yeah, and I just, as far as the maintenance of the underground system, um, I don't think we're proposing any, any easement on the, over that underground system.
Uh, you, you had requested that it be moved slightly away from the house, and we, we can do that.
Right.
And we can, uh, provide for an easement over it so that that homeowner is, I think that an easement would probably be appropriate so that the drainage is within an area on that property that the, the landowner knows is restricted in some form or fashion.
You'd have to have some easement there for, for maintenance. Uh, so I would put that in the, uh, that would be in the, I would say developers agreement, the stormwater management, because if the town or someone has to come in to do some work, we have to be able to enter that property.
Yeah. I guess I typically work in association. I mean, there's, uh, they're, they're responsible for maintenance and upkeep of the common areas in this case. Um, it would be the private road and, uh, I guess the underground, uh, detention basin would be part of that.
Correct.
Responsibility.
Yes.
The storm grades too, right?
Well, yeah, the storm drainage system in the street.
Right.
Right. Yeah. Um, and, right, you know, with the subdivision, you don't have any really com- like common area, like, like the common areas. Everything would have to be still covered by the, your access and utilities and stuff. That the individual owners would know their responsibilities or would allow other owners to cross their property to maintain the utilities like the water and sewer lateral.
Oh, yeah, we'd be cross, cross accident, cross access easements for maintenance of the water, the shore.
Right. Uh, part of my concern with the, with the private road, not, I mean, it, it basically can be designed as a, as a road, whether it's private or, or public, like, like Mr. Maskey said, um, is the, the lack of extending the public utilities up that road. And so you're, um, you're ending up with very long individual laterals for, for these houses, uh, sanitary and water, like almost 400 feet, uh, of a line going down the road all the way to get to the main and Farm Road. Um, so, you know, one way of doing that is to extend, is to extend the sanitary resource system up the road so that these houses just have kind of typical laterals into it. But then that might be maintained by the MUA or, or, or maybe, maybe that's a common maintenance of the, of the, of the maintenance itself could be maintained by the, uh, association. So that was my concern was the, kind of the way the utilities were being laid out with, uh, these long runs of, of utilities all down to Farm Road and counting three laterals, sanitary into one mambal there. And, uh, I might want the MUA to take a look at that and see if they're okay with that. I mean, that on Farm Road would be their system to take care of.
That's a good idea. We can do that. Yeah. Yep. Subject to the MUAs.
Yeah, if they're, I mean, if they're okay with that, just bear in mind, you know, you have homeowners that, now you have 400 feet of line that could go wrong, and they're responsible for that maintenance and repair all the way down.
So that would be an outside, another outside agency approval required.
I, well, yeah, the, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. But other than that, I think the, the drainage system is, uh, is designed in accordance with the standards.
Thank you. Any additional comments from the day is before we open the public? Okay. So I may have a motion to open the public.
I'll make a motion, Scobo.
Hashtag second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. If there's anyone from the public would like to question the witness of his testimony, please come to the mic, state your name and address for the record, spelling of your last name.
Dale Heinrichs, H E I N R I C H S, 398 Farm Road. Some of these are, I, I don't know if they're necessarily questions, um, that I apologize for the order of them. Um, one, there was a reference that Vice Chairman made in regards to the construct of that 50-foot conservation area. I didn't get the words exactly right, but you used the language that hopefully it would capture, I believe, 50-foot runoff. Hopefully you used the, that hopefully is the only word I cap- I had captured.
Yeah, I don't think I meant it in that sense.
Okay.
But, so maybe I misused the word. But what we talked about is stabilizing the slope.
Okay.
It's not on the plan right now. So I guess the only reason I said hopefully is because I don't know what it entails.
Okay.
And that's more of an engineering, excuse me?
There would be a requirement that.
We discussed it.
Yeah. Yeah, the, the applicants agreed to provide for that conservation easement. That's not in an ordinance. That would be, um, beyond the requirements of the standards. And then there was discussion about stabilizing the slopes up closer to the dwellings themselves, not necessarily impacting any neighbors. What we discussed that the environmental commission is adding to the plans enhanced slope stabilization mechanisms where, um, either a, a steeper slope where you plant grass and it might not grow well. It's, you know, too steep, it washes off, uh, would be either apply sod, uh, which stabilizes slope, um, more quickly. And, uh, another option would be an armored, like you, um, you, you plant the slope. When I say armored, I mean like a, a, a planting of grass and mulch mechanism that holds the mulch in place. And the mulch is like straw, like a netting.
Okay.
And the, the applicant agreed to do that.
Okay. Um, I missed which property was going to be, uh, built. One of the rear ones?
The, the, the rear left-hand lot is where the applicants right now intend to build their house. That would be the.
Intend to build?
Yes. It's.
Is that the change or going to build?
Yeah, I don't think that it's, I'll say, an obligation, you know, that if the applicant decides that they don't want to build the house there, and they sell all three lots, that could happen. I don't know that. But, that's, that's the plan right now. That's the whole purpose for this application, is to be able to create the lots and build that house.
And which is the lot that has the impervious coverage variance?
It's the, the rear right-hand lot, or the southeast lot, and that's?
I ask for clarification. I apologize. I'm very familiar with the area of?
No, sir, sir!
Anton, you can't answer his question, what he said.
Sir.
I'm recording something that doesn't make sense.
Okay.
Time.
Let me, let me try to be clear. The farm road is in a northeast direction, north being the top of the page when I refer to it, east being the right-hand side of the page when I refer to it, west being the left-hand side of the page, and south being the bottom of the page. And when I refer to the southeast lot, that would be the lot at the rear right-hand side of the access driveway. And that's the lot that has a 25-foot flagpole portion of the flag lot where the proposed driveway is. We didn't, we didn't center the proposed driveway on the two 25-foot pole portions of the flag lots. We placed it on the southernmost side, further away from our neighbor to the north, so that we could provide more green space there. That was the purpose.
Okay. Can someone on the board tell me how many instances have there been variances approved where the impervious coverage gap was 15% versus 25.74%? Have there been many instances?
Variances occur all the time, quite frequently. I don't know about what the percentage difference is per se, but, but that seems to be always something. It needs to be engineered.
Okay. I've just been in here where people have come in because they wanted to put an addition on their own for a disabled parrot or a shed, and we've had conversations, I sat here and listened to those conversations and thought how silly, given the gap between what they were asking for and the 15% requirement, it just seems like an awfully large gap to me.
Well, let me, like, if this were a public road, the driveway wouldn't be counted toward impervious coverage on this lot, because the driveway or private road would be in the right-of-way of the road. It's a mathematical issue. If this were a dedicated, you know, separate lot, this, this flagpole portion, and you called it a private road, then all three lots would have less than 15% coverage.
I don't, I, I can't process that, but?
No, 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 let me try. Not, two, two non-engineers, as I understand. This is a private road. Because it's a private driveway, it has to be counted mathematically on one of the lots. And that's what brings the impervious coverage over the limit. Now, if this were a township road, as it was in the previous application, if this were a road that we said, we'll build it, Hillsborough, you own it, you snowplow it, you do the work, it would not be counted as impervious coverage, because it is, I'm not trying to talk, I'm trying to explain it.
Castle, I know you're trying to help, but can we let the engineer answer the question? Because he's under, he's under oath.
He did, I think.
Yeah, yeah, okay, thanks.
Can I contest my interpretation? So, the private road is impervious coverage. That has to be considered in one of the properties or all three? Is it only in that southeastern?
Well, as I, actually, as I just described, because we chose not to center this driveway on the two flagpoles for the two rear lots, the majority of the driveway is on this one southeast lot. Yeah.
Got it. Okay. You made a reference regarding a swale and the impact to northern properties, and I'm not sure if that's, which property that was or the importance of that comment.
Well, right now, the drainage from this property drains in a northerly direction, and there is a low point on our northerly boundary line where the runoff becomes concentrated. And normally, we refer to that more concentrated, not at the fine stream or ditch, but as a swale.
Will that become worse?
No, because we've proposed the stormwater management system that mitigates for the additional runoff.
Okay. Oh, you know what? Sorry, just one other question. There's, the reference was made between traditional flaglot property, and I think the only difference there was one is a private road versus a public road. Do I understand that correctly?
Yes, the, the other exhibit that I had shown, and I'll go to A2 now, shows a more traditional public right-of-way, where all three lots are over an acre. There's the dedicated area of land that would be part of the township's responsibility for owner and maintenance, management and maintenance. And I refer to this as, I'll say, a more traditional subdivision layout, because it's more common. That's, you know, historically. But for, you know, such a small project like this, where you only have two lots, essentially, that would benefit from all of that public road, that is, the two rear lots. And the reason I don't refer to the front lot benefiting from it is because the front lot or the southwesterly lot that has direct frontage on farm road, because it could have a driveway right out of the farm road. So, you're essentially building all this road to access two rear lots.
Excuse me, thank you.
And, and what we're proposing to do is just a common driveway. Again, the southwesterly lot would also access that common driveway too, so we really only have one access point on farm road.
And if it were, the difference between the coverage required for a private road versus a more traditional public road, would it, would it be wider? Would it be?
Yes, normally, normally the, the access, this is a private driveway, the road, in a public road would normally be 30 feet wide with curb, perhaps sidewalk on one or both sides, and a large cul-de-sac at the end.
Okay, so, width-wise, five feet difference between public versus private road, is that?
Yeah, we're, we're wide enough so that two cars can pass, but not the, it's not really the same width. It's not going to be the same width as the traditional 30-foot wide.
Yeah, I was just curious for what that impact would be. I didn't know if it would be a larger impact in terms of that private versus public, and if that would have an impact on the property size of the impervious coverage, but does it sound like it's significant?
It's not significant, but it's more. If I went, if we went to that more traditional layout, it would be more of an impact from, you know, impervious coverage, and then it rolls on to stormwater management mitigation as well. Yeah.
Great, good, vessel. Thank you.
Thank you.
I think for the record, the plan calls for a 25-foot road, to answer your question, versus 30-plus.
Our proposal, yeah.
Yes.
Yes.
Hello, everybody. My name's Ken Baker. We've got 452 Farm Room. It's got a little gray square up there on the right angle. I had a question, a little question. I guess the first one, and most, for me, the most important, is if there was only one home built on this three-plus acres, almost four acres, would we need any variance? Any variance would be required?
No.
No, I don't. So, you know, when I read a lot of these narratives, etc., you know, I was really getting confused. In fact, I thought that whole green area was the flag lot, for years. That's what I thought a flag lot was. And my wife held this thing up to me, and she said, "Oh, can you see the flags? There's a one to the left and one down to the bottom, the pole, the metal." I said, "Oh, okay, now I understand." So, so that property, I think they said is 3.91 acres, something like that, or?
Yes.
And each one of these flag lots is one acre or about one acre?
No, the, the two flag lots are 1.3 and 1.4 acres.
And, and the current requirement, current ordinance is for three acres?
That's correct.
For each flag lot?
That's correct.
Okay. So, the first, sorry, I'll get back in my notes. I have, I guess, a question to the architect here?
Yes.
Question for the architect, and maybe for you, Mr. Ford.
That's correct.
Is, what's the square footage of each house? Not the living space, but the square footage?
Yeah, I don't know the square footage, and the subdivision wouldn't necessarily, they're not proposing, this is not a site plan approval, so the, so the house models could change. There could be, you know, it's not, the board doesn't approve the actual dwelling, if you will.
Okay. But when you're calculating impervious surfaces, doesn't that make a difference?
That's correct. Right.
So, I guess we can't estimate the cost of this house at this point in time, because it's not, it may change. So, so when we're talking about, I guess, mitigation of the trees, etc., it's all based on a percentage, I understand, of the value of the homes?
It's a value of total construction.
Value of total construction. So, we can't really come, can't really come up with a number right now. For, for, do you call it the waiver, is it a waiver?
Yeah, the economic hardship waiver.
Yeah, we can't really come up with a number.
We have provided a number. For residential projects, the economic hardship waiver doesn't include the house. It includes just the improvements of the road. Yeah. And the stormwater management, all the improvements.
But if I may just jump in there, Mr. Ford, it does include the house.
Okay.
I'll just, for the purpose of clarification, this is what goes into that calculation. Total site improvement costs include the estimated cost of construction for any proposed dwelling unit and any other structures associated with the proposed development. In addition to those costs normally associated with site preparation, soil erosion control, paving, utility work, landscaping, and related site improvements. So, it's basically all of the costs to build a house.
So, that number would have to be become a later, after the house is built, or an estimate?
We provided a number as part of the application.
And what is that number?
Yeah, yeah. Good question.
93.
Now, I think I saw it.
Yeah, Mr. Ford can share that.
Yeah.
It's $2,8379.28 was the number that was provided by the applicant.
That was based on a specific?
The total site improvement cost.
And that includes the building?
Correct.
Okay.
And then the landscaping is limited to 1.5% of that total cost?
Well, the tree replacement cost would be 1.5% of that total construction cost, development cost, rather.
Just, you know, and I don't know if you can answer this question either, but the time from start to finish, the complete construction, is there any estimate? You know, if you could break ground, I guess now, now there's a, you know, thinking is let's develop it in phases. But I live up there, and, you know, I'm getting older by the day. And I don't know if building construction, if these houses will be constructed for, if somebody said five years, 10 years, one year, and I'm going to have to put up the dust, dirt, noise, or, I don't know, I don't know. You said you built one, and then another, and then another. So, I don't know. I'm just asking for, for one home, what would be the typical time to build this home? To build a van, build a home, go to?
Let me, Mr. Ford, I think to help this, Mr. Baker, that's to a time span from the time, your improvements have to be done, the road, the underground stormwater, and then the house. That's probably the longest period, because the other two houses do not need the additional road or stormwater maintenance. So, what would be your estimate, your best estimate, beginning when the, when the building permits drawn, first shoveled in the ground until CO is issued?
I would say that it would be up to a year to build the driveway in the one house. And then with regards to, like, you know, dust, construction impacts, they're associated with any construction project, part of the, I'll say, the protection for the public, would be the Township Engineering Department providing inspections throughout construction, as well as the Somerset Union Soil Conservation District. Both of those agencies would look at those temporary disturbances, that is.
And there are also requirements for dust control and for water management during construction?
Right.
Okay. It's just, just a question. Thank you. I think you mentioned this before, but I'm not 100% sure. There was a letter we got, and most of the homeowners here received. It was regarding wetlands and transitional, what, maybe something like that. It was a letter written to the New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection, and I was wondering if anything was received that could be reviewed online.
And Michael, why did you say why such a letter was issued, please, and what the process is?
Yeah, the notice, I mentioned earlier that we have made an application to the New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection, NJDEP, for a freshwater wetland presence-absence determination. That is, to confirm that there are no wetlands or wetland buffers on the property. Part of that application required the public notice to anybody within 200 feet of the property, and that's probably what you're referring to, that you received. And we understand that the NJDEP has deemed the application complete, and it's under review.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, that still needs to be?
Right, that would, you know, any approval this board may grant would be subject to that final NJDEP determination. Yes.
I looked again on the internet, and I saw this report from the Delaware River Canal Commission, and we were talking a little bit about impervious surfaces. And before your members came up to, I don't recall the exact numbers, but I can tell you what they had. And they indicated that according to their, I'm just saying, staff in the surface, there was 1.91 acres of impervious surface on a 3.91-acre lot. And when I do the calculation, that's 48% of the property, based on the current, on the plan, would have impervious surfaces, which to me means, I guess, really I'm questioning the discrepancy at this point, because that's a lot of water. And I know I have a lot of water on my land right now, property, and I have a septic system. The septic system's quite old, because I've lived in that house for over 35 years. The house was built in 1974. So, I'm a bit concerned about any runoff that may occur. Either, I'm concerned about any runoff that may occur, particularly during, again, impervious surfaces, and then cutting down a number of trees, not a number, 600 or so trees that are currently located in the water plant. So, I, you know, I don't want to share it now, I want to share it later. So, I did check out the discrepancy.
Well, we, we received that Delaware River Canal Commission review as well. We've actually already prepared a response to that. We've actually already prepared a response to them. And again, just like the NJDEP, any approval the board may grant would be subject to us satisfying all those outside agencies, including NJDEP, as well as the Delaware Rare and Canal Commission. So, we'd have to address all of those comments to their satisfaction. And then, with regards to the sanitary sewer, you mentioned that part of this project would be extending the existing manhole that's at the front left-hand corner, I believe, of your property, across your frontage to, to these properties, and that would be subject to the Hillsborough Township Municipal Utilities Authority approval, that's another outside agency. And as we extended up Farm Road, I would be almost certain that, and HTMUA, the Hillsborough Municipal Utilities Authority, is gonna require that we provide a public sewer lateral, so that if and when you ever wanted to connect the public sewer, it'd be available there.
Can I, Mike, can we just clarify, though, with the issue of the, of what the DNR Canal Commission calculated, or can you just indicate whether or not you're in alignment, that number seems, given the other calculations, seems pretty high, so I'm just trying to understand from your perspective, is that?
Yeah, I, I don't know where the DNR Canal Commission came from with that number, but I can say that we've provided drainage calculations to them that account for all...
Not drainage, sorry, the total amount of area that would be considered impervious.
Right, well, as part is, the, part of the total, part of the drainage analysis would be those total impervious coverage. And I would say that if the, if we're providing for a stormwater management system that is above and beyond the impervious cover that's proposed as part of this project, that would make it a more conservative stormwater management system.
All right, let me ask it a different way, maybe. Can you just tell us what the, of the 3.9 acres, what, what the total impervious acre that you have would be?
Yeah, I, I don't know that number right now. I'd have to look it up for you, it's in our drainage report, yeah.
Yeah, I guess the stormwater drainage plan has some underground, and I don't understand any of this, underground depository that spreads this water over a period of time. I don't have to say that, under the way I did. And I wonder if there's filters, again, from the, this same report indicated that there's maintenance required on those underground, like, like my septic system, I need to clean the laterals periodically to keep it working. So, I would assume if I have something underground that has moisture in it, I guess leaves or dirt or something can get in there, and eventually it needs to be cleaned. So, I think that was one of the reasons that they defined, or to approve, at this time, one of the reasons. So, would that go into the homeowners, it would be required to clean this?
That's correct.
And subfrequents?
Correct.
And then that's part of the new ordinance for the town, I don't know how that works?
Well, the discussion so far this evening, and we've prepared it as part of the application, is not only a drainage report for the drainage calculations, but what's referred to as an operation and maintenance manual of the stormwater management system.
And then, the homeowners association would have to find someone that was capable of doing that?
That's correct.
And there would be a list of someplace where they would know where to find those contractors?
Well, often a homeowners association has a management company that manages that.
Okay. Okay. Oh, there was an issue about frontage. I had an issue about frontage. So, we have three properties, and they're all being, the frontage of the one on Farm Road, you know, that's a little short.
145 feet were, 150 is required, correct.
The other ones, the frontage that's been defined is from the, what do you call it? A easement, a driveway?
It's actually, it's actually part of the lots, the two rear lots, and their frontage is 25 feet wide, and that's compliant with the ordinance for flag lots.
Okay. I guess when I read that ordinance, it says something about a driveway per flag lot. And we have two flag lots being connected to one common road, and so I would think you needed two 25-foot wide frontages for each of the houses in the back.
There is. There is. There's a, there's a 25-foot flag pole for the rear lot to the northeast, and then there's another 25-foot wide flag pole for the lot to the southeast.
So, that width of that dome is 50 feet?
No, the width of the driveway is 25 feet, which is entirely on one lot and partially on the other lot. Yeah, there, so there, so this lot right here is like a flag, here's the flag portion of the flag, and here's the pole portion of the flag, this being 25 feet wide. This rear lot is also a flag lot, here's the flag portion of it, and there's another 25-foot swath of land that goes all the way out to Farm Road for that lot. And this, and this private driveway is partially on the flag pole portions of both of these rear lots. This is 50 feet in total, 25-foot wide driveway, so there's, there's the driveway that is partially on this lot and this lot. And there's actually an easement shown on the plan for that private driveway. And then the third lot, this one acre lot fronting Farm Road, I'm tracing right now the property line for that third lot. So, all three lots have frontage on Farm Road, that is, property that goes all the way out to Farm Road.
So, you're splitting that road up the middle? Half is on one side, half is on the other side?
Well, as I said earlier, actually, it's, it's not, it's not, we didn't actually split it in half, because that would put the driveway or the road closer to your property. So, what we've done is we've put it almost entirely on the bottom lot, so that it provides for greater green space between the driveway and your lot. So, it's not split, it's more, yeah.
I don't understand the frontage, but, first of all, I don't understand the frontage for the two lots, the two flag lots. It looks like they're sharing the common driveway, right? Drive, there's...
Well, everybody shares the driveway.
Okay, so now we share the frontage?
So, there's not, there's no, there's, it's, the lot frontage, this is, I'm tracing now, like, here, I'll trace it, here, maybe, look at the plan?
No, Doc.
Now, here, here, it's a, this is...
What sheet, Michael? What sheet? Michael, over.
What are we showing?
Okay, we're looking at Sheet 3, the preliminary and final subdivision plan. It shows, okay, so this, right, this, this line right here is the lot line for this property. This, what I'm trying, tracing right now, is the lot line for this property. See what I just traced? So, this 25-foot swath of land where the, where the, it is owned by this homeowner, is also entirely where the driveway is. And then the third lot, here's another 25-foot swath of land, and I'm tracing the rear lot.
Okay.
So, this 25-foot swath of land is for this owner, but there's not the driveway.
Thank you.
And it could, it could have been a 50-foot swath of land with a public road, and then the road would have to be centered on the driveway, on that right-of-way.
So, and I guess regarding the maintenance, the filing, the garbage, the emergency vehicle license, the storage, water drainage, parking, and pedestrian safety are all encompassed in that road, meaning, you know, somebody's walking down their driveway, and now they have to close the road, whatever, but they're walking down.
That 25-foot wide, that's correct.
Well, if I can, Mr. Chairman, I want to make Mr. Baker understand, we're not, we are not replacing the police department or emergency services, but people are walking down that driveway, you'll be having insurance as part of the common maintenance program, but still will have access to emergency service, the police department, this is not gonna be a self-contained community, it's just gonna be those three houses will be on a, an association agreement.
Yeah, smaller than required flag lot. Right?
Per land area, right.
Is there any proposed buffer areas between, I guess, Ken's property and the, oh, around, you know what I mean, I'm surrounded by...
Well, I'm, I'm not, I don't know who Ken is, but I...
That's scary, I'm sorry.
Oh, okay. You used to call me Mr. Baker, and you referred to Ken, and I thought you were talking about somebody else. Well, we, we've shown, we've shown the, you know, this area here that would be landscaped, and that's providing, I'll say, a bigger buffer than if we were to do a public road and center the road on the public right-of-way. The only conservation easement we've talked about so far this evening is a, is a 50-foot wide swath of land at the rear of the property, and that was the result of a discussion with the Environmental Commission on Monday evening. Yeah.
So, so I, I guess we can still talk about what that buffer might be if the, if this subdivision is approved?
Correct.
This is a silly question, I think, but was the whose having of removing 72% of the trees included in water management is...
Yes. Yeah, the land cover change from wooded to impervious coverage, both for the houses and the driveway, and the remaining areas being lawn, is part of, all the land cover is considered as part of the stormwater management.
Just that thought I have for very now. That, the ordinance says, no more than one principal shall be served for one access drive.
Yes, we've proposed the common access drive to reduce the amount of impervious coverage, which would result in, say, three separate driveways.
I think that's all, thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Ken.
Yep. David, a quick question with, yeah.
Oh, I apologize.
David, just a real quick question, with the calculation for the economic hardship waiver, is that just one house included in that, or would it be...
Should be the entire development, the entire tract.
So, is this, is the number that you gave for the economic hardship calculation was based on one house being built, or three?
As I recall, it was the, the total estimate for all three houses.
Okay.
To the extent we need to adjust that, we can.
Okay.
It, it should be the entire cost of the entire development.
Right, it's not just for the first house being built.
Right. Yeah. I just want to confirm, because I thought I heard only one.
Greg Thompson, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay. One stole, one stole drive, I'm actually, I want to say the third most affected person by this. The first agenda spoke are very good neighbors, and understand me this, I, I commend them for coming. When the initial building of this was proposed, I want to say this was 14, 15 years ago, was the original of Mark Cott's proposal, am I correct? If you were to just take that and build that today, as a committee, as an organization, would you go and say, yes, no problem, resurrect it? I think you need to ask yourself that.
We can't answer that, because we don't have that application, we don't have any witnesses to question.
I know, what I'm saying is, but as, as a group, I think you need to look at that as an application, and then say, okay, why is this different? What are they proposing the differences? Why are they proposing the differences?
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Mr. Thompson may pose that to you as a rhetorical question. The only item that you can consider this evening for the purposes of the record is the application before you.
Then you can go and look at the legal records, my lawyer found it with the township, I'll go rehire him, and you can do that again, because I don't think that that's a fair answer for people who are smart. There's a difference between what you legally say you can do, and don't can do, and it can do, based upon logic. So, don't hide behind shadows. Not offensively, I'm asking you to open your mind to that.
Mr. Thompson, the board can open its mind anything for purposes of making a determination, which was the question you asked them to make. So, while you're hiding behind shadows and playing word games, the fact is that they are not permitted to reconsider an application that was not approved by this board 15 years ago, and I was board attorney then, at a application currently before them, which is what is there.
Was the other application approved?
Yeah.
So, they're not allowed to look at previous public records?
They are not allowed to look at previous public records as it relates to an application before it.
This is regarding not only, this is regarding a variance, acceptance of a variance.
Mr. Thompson?
It's not regarding a, a proposal, it's about whether they accept the variance. Okay? So, anyhow, my point being in that sense of words, I don't want to be argumentative with the board, because I really commend what they're doing. What I'm saying is, is that I don't understand the reasoning why a public road with lots that were approved, with a very expensive draining process that went through this board week after week after week, to the point where they wanted to tap into my retention basin behind my property, to the point where, my understanding at least, is one of the reasons that the process did not go forward, was because of the cost of proper water retention and taking it off. So, that's why I say, hearing what I just heard them say, and I do not know whether or not there is any difference, or less requirements, or smaller requirements for what's going on here compared to what was required back then, because my understanding is the reason, Mr. Cott, I could be wrong, it's hearsay, my understanding is that did not go forward was because of the cost of doing proper water retention. I do not know if that is the case now, I do not know why the changes are done, et cetera. Does that make sense, am I clear what I'm saying? So, I'm just saying, if we compare apples and apples, which proposal was better, one that we went through exhausted procedures to review and go through, or what's before us today? I don't know what's better, a public road or a private road. I don't know what it means to lighting, I don't know what it means to snow removal, I don't know what it means to access, I just don't know what it means, you know, it's a 40 mile an hour road, the people coming out of that road, dark, not properly lit, I don't know what it means to streetlights, there are no streetlights between the corner of Stoll and all the way down the corner of Valley, so there's, basically, that's a totally dark area, people come down that road... dark area, people come down that road, tears come out, et cetera, et cetera, there's all kinds of things you need to think about when you're making a private versus making a public. That's all I can, would want to bring up regarding that. And I think that's an important thing to understand. You also brought up the other proposed development, which is directly across from Stoll, which is an extension of Stoll into another driveway, simply on an aesthetic purpose, how are you developing the town? Do you want those sections to look alike, to be similar, to be different, to be planned congruently, so that when one guy's doing one thing, and the other guy's doing the other thing, they don't flow together in the middle? You have modifications also that have been proposed for the house in the middle between those two subdevelopments. What are they going to propose? How are they affecting? How is that all coming together at one? Because it's, people have the right to proceed and do what they need to do, but planning and proposing and accepting variances should be looking at the bigger picture. If that makes sense, you also know the issues you have with what's going on, Royce Field to Valley, coming down that road, how are you working on that road? What are you thinking of traffic patterns relating to coming out of a private road, dark area, how it's coming up? What goes down Valley, how you're using farm for police access, access to the Somerset County Roads Department area back there? What you're going to have on that road as 206 is modified in the next three, four, or five years, how you are now diverting traffic through there, what that all means, and I think the other great point that was made up was how long do these things have to get done? Because you built one house, it sits there, well, I'm going to do the second, am I going to do the third, et cetera, et cetera? That area shouldn't have to be disturbed by three different subdevelopments, over how long of a period of time, especially during the timeframe when you have everything else going on? As a planning board, I would suggest you think about what happens there, and I also asked the questions, why do we need, why are flag lots have a certain impermeability requirement, and then we're going to just go vary it? What's the reason behind that? If the ordinance is there because flag lot should only have this impermeability, impervious surface, what's the reason behind treating, what is your assigned cause for allowing the variance? Are you obligated to allow that variance? Are you not obligated to allow that variance? Therefore, what you're doing there doesn't make sense compared to everything you looked at before, why are you obligated to give the variance? Can you answer that one for me at all? Am I allowed to, anybody have any suggestion on that? Why would a board want to grant that variance? What is in the, what is in the interest of the town in doing that?
I'll give you, without an understanding of where this ultimately will go, I think the issue in particular in the impervious is, is the impervious improved by having a private versus a public road? That's one of the things that I think the applicant and their engineer would say, yes, we could do it one way, but it will, overall, while the individual lots may be different, the overall project would be worse from an impervious standpoint, so which would you prefer?
Okay. And as I said, it strikes me from my historical, you know, perspective on this, does it come down to, is there a cost situation that's being avoided? And I run into people asking me questions about those houses, those lots, as they look at, all the time, they come to me because I'm right there, and I don't think people understand the cost it's going to take as a homeowner association to manage that problem. I think that that is being potentially undersold to people, and then when they hear it, they're not happy with it, with maintaining a private road, maintaining a private property, what is there, what are our, you know, I'm in Tanglewood Estates, part of the larger development over there, Crestmont area, we're at, I think, $80 a quarter for that, you know, for everything we have, because we're basically maintaining retention, retention basins, and that's what, is that 400, 500 homes? So if we're $80 a month and it's 400, 500 homes, if you got three homes and you got to maintain, you know, value runoff, I'm assuming, given that what you're going to expect someone to put in, you're talking $1,000, $2,000, $3,000 a year, are people caught in for that extra tax or where? Plus, what, they have to pay for their own snow removal, lights, you know, all of your, everything that you have to, you know, maintain there? That's a big consideration to take as to whether someone is going to take that into consideration when they are proposing this kind of a development. And I'm sure you run into that a lot, am I correct? Is that a common issue within the town?
Actually, Mr. Thompson, as much as we like your, actually, this part is questions of the testimony, we're not into the comment section, so if you have questions for Mr. Ford, so we have other people that may have questions.
No, I agree with you, sir, I apologize, but I, you know, I try to come to you from an educated perspective, because I respect you.
Okay, but do you have any more questions for...
Take that back, yeah, thank you. And, sir, the township attorney there, I do not mean to offend you, laws are laws, but that doesn't mean that they cannot, they do not have stretch.
And additional comments from the public, or not comments, oh boy, questions of the witness, we'll get to the comment section towards the end. Okay. Move to close, or are we going to keep...
Mr. Stoll, Mr. Ford, your only witness?
Yes, sir, I indicated we had the architect, but I think we've delivered all the information that is necessary. You can close the portion relative to Mr. Ford with the understanding that he'll take the final comments of the public on the application.
Do I need a motion to close to Mr., questions, Mr. Ford, okay?
Motion to close, Mr. Ford, possibly. Leponti.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
It's a dispoint if either Mr. Maske or Mr. DeSessa have any comments on the application and/or the public before the board deliberates.
Nothing further.
Okay. So with that, I, we're going to be coming to the close.
We'll get there, just a minute.
At this point, you can invite members of the public who wish to comment on the application itself, come forward, sort of make your air, focus on the application before you...
Correct.
The questions that people had about that.
Yes.
You want them?
If the owners are here, maybe they might have questions that you can answer, if you might.
That's Mr. Stoll, Mr. Stoll, what is it, what is it?
I'll just think, I, I think it would be nice to have the owners testify, because there are some questions that I think that were raised that maybe only the owner can answer as far as what would be done, I think that would be fair.
Mr. Andrews?
I have one moment.
We'll take a five-minute recess, we'll reconvene about quarter after.
Good morning, and welcome to the opening of the Peter J. Biondi Route 206 bypass here in Hillsborough Township. Thank you for joining us here today for this very much anticipated event here, can't think of one that we've been waiting for longer, as we open the remaining sections of this vital roadway which has been named in memory of the late Assemblyman Peter J. Biondi. This roadway will officially open for traffic on Saturday, June 5th. I'm joined here today by my colleagues, the Hillsborough Township Committee, Deputy Mayor Frank Delkor, Committeeman Doug Thompson, Committeewoman Janine Erickson, and Committeeman Jeffrey Wright. I would also like to thank this opportunity to introduce some other guests here this morning. Senator Kit Bateman, who was a sponsor of the legislation to actually get this name, this road named after the late Assemblyman Biondi, and thank you for that. Assemblyman Roy Fryman, Commissioner Paul Drake, and please help me welcome Ms. Joan Thank you for being here today on this historic day for Hillsborough Township. The late Assemblyman Peter J. Biondi was a pillar in our community for over 35 years. As a result of time serving the community as a member of the Township Committee, mayor, freeholder, and assemblyman, he was often referred to as Mr. Hillsborough. During his entire tenure in public life, he remained committed to the betterment of Hillsborough, his tireless dedication and support of Hillsborough was unwavering, hence why the 2013, in 2013, this roadway was officially named after Peter J. Biondi. The bypass is a vital part of Hillsborough's economic development, not only will it bypass lessen congestion and traffic along the existing 206, but will also serve as the impetus for a future town center that is envisioned in our township master plan. This long-awaited and much-anticipated vision is now a reality. Originally considered in the early 1970s as the Hillsborough Township began to develop, unfortunately, it remained only a concept until the early 2000s. In August 2010, township local and state officials broke ground to officially start the construction of the bypass at midsection, somewhere where we're standing right now. We thank past and current state administrators for their diligence in seeing this project through. This portion will shift traffic on the new 3.6-mile section of US 206 to the east of the existing highway between Mountain View Road and Old Somerville Road, creating the opportunity for further development of the town center along the current 206. The project limits are from Mountain View Road to Hillsborough Road on the southern end, and from Animal Road, Somerset County Route 514, to Old Somerville Road on the northern end. To the north, the widening will work, will continue until the final phase is complete. We have looked forward to this day, and we now look forward to the development of our downtown Hillsborough Main Street vision. Please stay tuned as we continue to grow and improve and remain as one of the best places to live and work in America. Again, thank you all for being here this morning, we will now have the official ribbon-cutting, and that will conclude our ceremony, and again, thank you to our honored guests who are here today, and Ms. Joan Biondi, and thank you very much.
Hi, I'm Mayor Sean Leponti, and I'm proud to showcase Hillsborough, one of the best places to live in America.
From the preserved farms that helped feed the world, to the Van de Veer House, to the John R. Stott's House restored and currently utilized for business, to the magnificent and world-famous Duke Farms...
Where you can walk or ride a bike through their historic grounds. To the iconic and machanic Reformed Church, and just down the road is our fabulous machanic mill located right on the picturesque Rowerton River.
You're invited to visit Hillsborough, a great place to live, work, play, and do business anytime, and experience over 250 years of proud history in Hillsborough, New Hillsborough, New Jersey, celebrating 250 years of a rich history.
Hi, I'm Mayor Sean Leponti, and I'm proud to showcase Hillsborough, one of the best places to live in America.
From the preserved farms that helped feed the world, to the Van de Veer House, to the John R. Stott's House restored and currently utilized for business, to the magnificent and world-famous Duke Farms...
Where you can walk or ride a bike through their historic grounds. To the iconic and machanic Reformed Church, and just down the road is our fabulous machanic mill located right on the picturesque Rowerton River.
You're invited to visit Hillsborough, a great place to live, work, play, and do business anytime, and experience over 250 years of proud history in Hillsborough, New Hillsborough, New Jersey, celebrating 250 years of a rich history.
Hi, I'm Mayor Sean Leponti, and I'm proud to showcase Hillsborough, one of the best places to live in America.
From the preserved farms that helped feed the world, to the Van de Veer House, to the John R. Stott's House restored and currently utilized for business, to the magnificent and world-famous Duke Farms...
Where you can walk or ride a bike through their historic grounds. To the iconic and machanic Reformed Church, and just down the road is our fabulous machanic mill located right on the picturesque Rowerton River.
You're invited to visit Hillsborough, a great place to live, work, play, and do business anytime, and experience over 250 years of proud history in Hillsborough, New Jersey.
Go ahead, all right. Counselor, go ahead.
Ready, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
All right, thank you for the opportunity, I did want to speak a few minutes to the client, but before I go, I'd like to reopen Mr. Ford for a second, he has answers to two of the questions that the board and the public requested. Michael, you have some information on the impervious, and you also have information on the economic hardship.
Michael, you're still under oath.
Yes, can you, can you hear me? Okay. There was a question about the impervious coverage, reference to the Delaware and Rar Canal Commission report that referenced 1.9 acres. I did a calculation, the impervious coverage percentages were seeking approval for, for all three lots combined, total 1.07 acres of impervious coverage. So that's the 14.67% that's shown on Lot 3.02, the 25.74% that's shown for the lot with the variance 3.03, and 13.51% on the lot 3.04 proposed, that totals, those three percentages amount to 0.7% of impervious coverage. And then there was also a question regarding the economic hardship waiver and whether our calculations for the total, I'll say, $2 million of total improvements included the houses, as well as the improvements to the road, and they do, we included a construction cost estimate which accounts for the home construction, and this is the home construction, bricks and mortar, not like what you would sell a house for, is $1.4 million. That equates to all three houses at about 4,700 square feet per house, at $100 per square foot for construction cost of the houses, so that 1.4%, 1.4 million is a portion of the overall 2 million... So that 1.4 million is a portion of the overall $2,8379 that came up with the economic hardship waiver that totaled the required tree plantings of 93 trees. So the $2 million minus the $1.4 million means the other improvements. That would be the road, the underground detention base, in total, just over $600,000.
Your builder's going to be quite busy if he, if word gets out he's doing houses at $100 bucks a square foot.
Dave, a quick question. Is there a standard cost for these unit prices, some type of guideline?
Not that I know of, no.
I do have a follow-up question for Mr. Ford. Let's make sure I understood your numbers. You said minus a certain figure? Did I hear that correctly?
No, I was just trying to describe the total construction costs of $2 million. If the portion for the dwellings is 1.4, the remaining portion accounts for the other improvements, like the driveway, the stormwater, is just over $600,000. That's what I was trying to-
Okay, so the $2,8379 includes everything?
Correct.
From underground to the top of the roofs?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Okay, so, Michael, just before you get down, because I just want to make sure I heard your numbers for each of the lots. So it sounds like two of the three lots are under 15% impervious coverage?
That's correct, just slightly.
Okay, so those wouldn't require waiver, then?
That's correct.
So which, if you could just point on there, which is the one that requires impervious coverage slightly?
The southeastern lot, this lot I'm highlighting now, the rear-right corner lot, and that's because the driveway is-
Right, is on that.
Thank you, Mr. Ford.
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Angres, why don't you stand up, please, raise your right hand. You'll be sworn in by Mr. Bernstein.
Why don't you give him your microphone, so he has you. His right hand, please, sir. Testimony about gives truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God.
Yes.
Can you indicate your name?
My name is-
First and last, spell your last name, please, and please speak up into the microphone.
Sure. Last name, Angres, A-N-G-R-A-S. First name, Sukhdev, S-U-K-H-D-E-V.
Thank you, sir. Sit down. You're a witness, Mr. Stoll. Thank you, Mr. Bernstein. Make sure you lean forward, so that that's it. All right, Mr. Angres, until Mr. Bernstein says I lead too much, I'll just try and help you out a bit. Mr. Angres, you and your wife reside with two children presently in Biscataway, am I correct?
Correct.
And you, did you, and your wife purchased this property?
Yes, we recently purchased this property.
All right, and how long ago did you purchase it?
Probably a month ago.
All right, and what do you want to do with this property?
The property, this property?
Yes, right here.
I want to build my wife's dream home.
And so, your wife wants to come to Hillsborough, and she saw that saying in the bottom there?
Yes.
And that's where she wants to live and raise, finish raising her children, or maybe some grandchildren, am I correct?
Of course, and the Biscataway House is beautiful, and I convinced her many, many times not to move forward, but she would not budge. And a happy wife is-
All right, I'm with you. All right, thank you. Now, in all seriousness, so the one house you intend to construct is, assuming you were to get approval of the subdivision and get the requisite building permits and construction drawings, is that correct?
Correct.
And you've engaged Mr. Kurt K-U-R-T Ludwig, L-U-D-W-I-G, as an architect for the project, is that correct?
I feel really bad for him, because my wife calls him all the time.
All right, so she's been working with him for about a year?
Yes, correct.
Now, you understand that Mr. Ford and I have both explained to the board that it's the intention to have what we call an association who will be responsible for the repair and maintenance and upkeep of A, the driveway, B, the underground collection system for storm drainage, and any other common elements of this property. You understand that?
Yes, including the storm removal and all that.
Storm removal, pavement repair, repaving, curb repair, et cetera, et cetera, am I correct?
Correct.
And you understand that?
Yes.
And you agree and understand that you, and any potential purchasers, if you sell of the other lots, would also have the same obligation?
Correct.
Now, as we sit here this evening, and I ask you to be honest, not that you would ever not be, do you have any current plans with the other two lots that are being created?
Not at this time.
And how old are your children?
They're six and 16.
Okay, so it's a big spread there?
Yes.
All right, the 16-year-old, you don't know whether eventually he'll remain in the area. She, I'm sorry.
Well, she wants to go to Columbia, and then maybe she'll come back.
Okay, so at the present time, you don't know, in fairness, whether you're going to retain them for a long time and see what you want to do for a family, or whether you might at some point in time sell a lot, or you could be ambitious and even build and sell, am I correct?
Correct.
So it's fair to say today, you've got no intent and no decision as to the other two lots?
Not at this time.
All you want to do is to build the dream house for your wife?
For my wife, yes.
All right. That's all I have of this witness, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Professionals? Okay, Dais, please.
I'll just, welcome to Hillsborough, hopefully.
Thank you.
So, obviously, the cost you're willing to incur for one lot is substantial. You understand what they're talking about, the maintenance and all the proposed upkeep of what you're asking for the private drive with the waste management system and all the things that you're requesting, correct? There was a question about lighting at the end of the driveway. Would you be willing to, if this board pool put a street light at the end of your road to allow, illuminate the road?
Sure, I would love to walk around the road, so why not? More lights, more better.
Okay. The house sizes that are, were estimated were roughly 5,000 square foot a house, is that what you're looking, and your dream home, is that approximately what you're looking to build?
It was a lot bigger, but she had to come to reality, and cost has gone up for, to build houses, so we have to shrink it down.
Okay, thank you, that's all.
Welcome as well. Can I just, the lot that you chose to build, your home, just curious, what was the, why that particular lot, and does that affect any of your future planning?
Well, I belong in India, so there's a lot of directions that we have to follow in order to live in harmony and peace, and that happened to be in that direction.
Thank you. Any additional questions, Dais?
And, I'm sorry, one more question. So, the, just going back to the square footage, because I know we, in aggregate, it's about 1,500 square feet, I mean, 15,000 square feet of home. Can you give us an idea, I know you scaled it back, the estimated size of your dream home?
It's going to be five.
Okay, about the same, so it'll be roughly the same, you estimated.
You know, but not that much.
Okay.
I'm curious, Mr. Delkor, you could inch up a little bit more, depending on whether Ms. Angres-
There's a microphone.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure there wasn't one 10,000 and two 2,500, that's all I was trying to get to.
I would want that for anybody.
Thanks.
Motion to open to public.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
One with favor?
Hi.
Hi, if there's anyone from the public that would like to ask the witness-
As the witness's testimony.
The witness's testimony, because we'll have opportunities for comments at the end, but it's just ask questions of this witness's testimony. Okay? Oh, Mr. Baker.
Hey, Ken.
Yeah, that's right.
Hi, Ken Baker, 452 Farm Road. I just had one question. I looked on the floor plan, and it showed, I think it was 6,700, oh, 6,700 square feet for the house that the architect-
Yeah, I told you, we scaled it down. We're only scaling it down even more.
Okay.
Because I just bought a 4,600 square feet home and realized how big it is, so we don't need bigger, we need to scale it down.
That's a big house, I'll tell you. I don't know if you saw it, it had an elevator in it. It's my parents' old, so they meant to go up there.
I'm old, too, I don't have an elevator.
You can help use mine.
Very neighborly.
Okay. Any additional questions of this witness on his testimony?
Motion closed.
Okay, do I have a second?
I have a second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Good luck to you.
Any other witnesses, Mr. Stoll?
No.
Pick the chair, you can.
No, I do not, Mr. Bernstein, thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Time to entertain any members of public who wish to make a comment on the overall application.
Okay, do I need to have a formal motion for that?
Yes.
Okay. Motion to open for final public comment on this application.
I'll make that motion. Just go.
Hashtag second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
One more public question you're asking?
This is going to be comment, you can comment on whatever you want to say about this application now.
No, you got to come up, sorry.
No yelling from the pews, Mr. Thompson.
Not from the seats. They just, please say your name.
Does the township have any-
Name, address, please.
I'm sorry. Sorry, name and address.
Greg Thompson, one stole ride, goes to New Jersey, I apologize.
No worries.
Does the township in itself have any governance over homeowner associations?
Well, there has to be some, generally, yes. I mean, it could be that there's some times where there might be some escrow money that has to be done to ensure that the work is, but we have to also ensure that there's other, that some of the things that are confirmed are actually put into the resolution and completed.
The reason I ask that, sir, is that you're basically creating at this point a one whole homeowner association. So basically, you're splitting his taxes for maintenance on that home into two buckets, one that is required and one that is barrier, because that homeowner association itself decides what gets done and what doesn't get done, right? So, I'm not familiar with this, I'm just asking, or is that a standard way of operating town?
Well, may I, may I respond, Chairman, not argumentative, not arguably. But I don't know if we have to understand, there is a-
I'll consider the mic, please.
There is, thank you, Mayor. There's an association, and the planning board, if approved, is going to require with the engineer what goes into the package, and the package will include the road and the undergrounds.
Correct.
So, there's, other than that, and storm removal and garbage, so other than that, there's no other functions, and annually, it would have to be to report on the most important thing.
Yes, I'm a member, I've been very highly involved in the homeowner association across the street.
Right.
As an example, power washing defense, property maintenance, retention pond maintenance, we have a contract in both that include the common properties and common areas. We have an enforcement process, we have a cleanup process, we have a homeowner association that gets together, decides upon what the association has to and has not to do. What you're basically doing here is creating a one-person government.
Not really, it's going to be a three-person.
Well, it's quasi-tax, it's covering things that would otherwise be covered by the township in tax, and it's being maintained individually, that's why I'm asking. So I'm just, I don't know the answer to that. I'm just asking, is that a common thing to do? That's my question, or if that is common, I accept it as common. If it's not, I try and understand-
The existence of homeowner's associations are not unique to Hillsborough Township. How it's divvied up, who maintains the cost, is ultimately the determination of the homeowner's association.
Okay, but therefore, I just ask them, is a public road versus a private road better for the township, relevant for its ability to tax and maintain?
Well, I'll just voice my opinion, because I've been very vocal of this over the years, and even when I was on the committee. I like private roads, because I don't have to pay for them from the government, from the public, because municipal government was never designed to maintain roads.
Okay, and that's my thing, and I'm just asking that question, it's something that-
And again, that's my opinion, I'm not speaking for the other board members.
But just to be clear, it doesn't, it doesn't absolve in any way the homeowner of their normal tax obligations?
It varies.
No, no, it doesn't, actually. It doesn't. They will have their normal tax obligation on their home. The services that they need to provide as part of the homeowners is simply an additional fee that the homeowner's association will charge the homeowners?
Yeah, I get it.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure we're clear, we're not, we're not passing the tax over to the homeowner's association?
No, I know that, but it's the things that make it a minimal. There are, there are many properties out there that are private properties that have become ghost towns. People walk away from them as opposed to maintaining them, and then you end up with a road that's long covered with weeds because the mulch that's up there, you know, the Mick McManchin is now empty. And, you know, I get the idea of wanting to build your dream and build your home, but whether or not that overall is a long-term benefit to the town, I don't know. Versus creating something that's maintainable and, you know, sell a house, buy a house, move in, as opposed to having to worry about a road, worry about everything. Everybody built their own private road, you basically would have a monopoly for it, not a town. That's the whole, you know, what I'm saying. So you got to think about those considerations when you're planning. That's all I'm saying. Okay? That's my, my learning.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Any additional, just come on up.
Dale Heinrich, 398 Farm Road. Just a couple of thoughts. My house is 5,000 square feet, I have 3.3 acres of property. Village construction, I'm thankful that they did not build out that property, and if I had an opportunity to make money on the two-thirds of my property that is covered by woods, I would not do that. And I understand why someone would, but when, when you were speaking earlier about the planning responsibilities, I don't think it should be a foregone conclusion that they, any citizen has a right to build a flat, a road, private road, and it concerns me that there's this, I prefer private over this, when from a planning perspective, I would prefer farm road look like my house. One house, one house, one house, not one-one, then there's going to be three, then there's going to be one, then there's going to be four, and it just, it makes, it doesn't make for, it doesn't look like there's a planning consideration from that perspective. The other concern I would have, farm road, if I knew what I knew today, when we bought the house, I probably wouldn't have bought the house, because there is so much commercial traffic. Whoever buys that property along farm road is going to be sorely disappointed, and if I knew, if it was going to be somebody that wasn't their family, but a private purchaser, I would go down there and recommend they not buy the property because of the quality of life. The other, there is a total cost estimate of the 2.1 million. If it ends up being higher, is there a short process for the, is it economic hardship?
Are you saying if, I don't know the answer to that question. You're sort of saying if they get into construction and find out that the construction costs more, would we reevaluate the?
It's a good question.
It's a good question. I don't know if it's ever come up.
Well, because the cost is not $100.
That was my point earlier, yeah.
You're spot on. And then what I'm hearing, there's other concerns that $600,000 of road underground that be-
Talking to the mic, okay?
Oh, sorry. That the, that other 600, was it 600,000?
Roughly.
Roughly. That that might be underestimated because of the cost of prior estimates on the storm drainage system. So if this ends up costing 4 million, then we've under, then, you know, Hillsborough should have gotten more money, right?
We don't get money.
Well, it has economic hardship.
It's all based on tree mitigation, how many trees he puts in, that's all that is. It's all based on tree mitigation, how many trees he puts in, that's all that is about, that's what that is.
So it's not big dollars, but my point is that if the real cost is four million, and I could, any of us can go out and see what a cost per square foot is, I can tell you with lumber costs, prices, it's not a hundred dollars. So somebody should be saying, checking that and validating it, between the cost of the home and the storm mitigation, it will be more than two million dollars, in my opinion. So there should be a validation process, we should all be interested in the community that we're challenging the assumptions in that structure.
Okay, thank you.
Hi, Ken Baker, 452 Farm Road. I'm still awake. It's a second miracle. So, uh, a couple things. You know, I lived where I lived for, like I said, 35 years, and I lived in Hillsborough for forty or around forty. When I moved in, Farm Road was what it, what it's called, across the street was a sheep farm. Uh, there was absolutely nothing to the west of me. You know, after the sheep moved out, some cows moved in, and down the street, off of Valley Road, there was a horse, we called him Pokey when we were growing up, when my kids were growing up. So Farm Road is no longer a farm road, uh, in the sense of the word. Uh, you know, we talk about flag lots, and, uh, you know, the ordinance is, I think, very specific, that there's a minimum of three acres required for a flag lot. We're building two flag lots and a home on about three acres, a little over three acres. So that's a total of seven acres, and the ordinance calls for three for one flag lot. So, so we're gonna put two pounds of crap in a one-pound bag, so that's far close. Uh, I just, I can, I, do you have the copy of the ordinance? I don't know, has anybody read it for flag lots?
We don't have the copy.
Do you mind if I just read it? Uh, so 188-49 Flag Lots, amended, da-da-da-da. Flag lots may be selectively approved in just about every zone and district as a means of gaining access to the rear of lots, or to a portion of tracts having difficult means of access. Recognizing that flag lots are allowed as an exception rather than the rule, and that the creation of flag lots adds development without accompanying street systems, and following conditions, the following conditions shall apply. A, on approved primary local or secondary roads, three-acre lots to the rear and the lots fronting on an approved road are permitted, provided that the lot has a minimum frontage of 25 feet. Uh, continue on, but when I was looking at the plan, and I really did struggle with it, I gotta start with the flag lot and the fold and all that, I didn't, I saw 25 feet, I didn't see the other two, it's almost like, uh, I don't, it seems like it was like a sneaky little thing, that's all. Uh, minimum 25 feet, if approved by the approved authority of the county, such reduction shall benefit the township by reason of encouraging the development of rear acreage without degradating from the public welfare or from the intent of this town. So, uh, degradation, what does that mean? You know, it means different things to different people. To me, I've lived in that home for, it's my life. I retired, I was hoping to stay there. I have birds that hang out in, in fields, I have, I have deer that come by all the time. I have fox, I don't know, they're all in the woods, they're all there. This, this is the first year I saw she, bluebirds that came around. I've never seen them before, just car knows it, and, and that fly between Dale's property and mine, they go right across. Uh, I'm gonna miss that, it's quiet, it's relatively quiet, as Dale said, there's a lot of traffic now on Farm Road, there's an asphalt plant up the street, where every time an asphalt truck goes by, it stinks. Uh, there's a couple of other things, one really applies, and it's, it's really meant for the farm, and it's B, the minimum lot size exclusive in the Gexick Strip shall be two times the minimum required by the agricultural districts and the mountain conservative district. That would mean that 10 acres is required, or possibly 20, for a flag lot, and we're building one home on a one-acre flag lot, or that's the proposal. Uh, access drive shall intercept over the river. D, subdivisions of flag lots below these standards are prohibited. E, no more than one principal use shall be served from one access road. So here we have potentially three. So the entire ordinance, the way I see it, is it just proto, it's useless.
Mr. Baker, for the purposes of the record, the, the language says re-subdivision of a flag lot below these standards is prohibited. Just for the purpose of the record.
Can you say that again, sir?
Re-subdivision of a flag lot, the key word being re-subdivision.
Okay, so I'm gonna, so if you read the ordinances for, for Franklin Township, they have very distinct definition of a flag lot. Uh, so I told you in the beginning, when I shared, uh, that to Mr. Ford, when I looked at this, it looked like a flag to me. It didn't have a distinct pole, but it looked like a flag. So, you know, in, in our township, maybe there is, I guess, uh, David, we know better, the definition of a flag lot, but Franklin Township does an excellent job of defining what a flag lot is, and we certainly don't get like it from them. But thank you for the... Uh, I just wanted to go on a little bit, I'm done with the ordinance, there's more to it, but I'm not gonna go into it. So basically, there's insufficient land to build two flag lots and, uh, another home according to our current ordinance. I have a petition here from neighbors, uh, I don't know who would like it, if it's worth anything.
Petition denied, municipal, Mr. Ford, can you agree?
Is this open?
Mr. Smith, Mr....
I can't, I used to have a...
Mr. Stoll, the, the board can take notice of the petition, the chairman can take it, has no impact in terms of the decision rendered. It's not testimonial, it's not, but this board generally is a rule, as long as I've been the board attorney, has accepted citizen petitions, and for the purposes of the record. If Mr. Baker has it.
It doesn't matter. Here we go.
Mr. Chair, if you can get it.
I'll give it to you.
Okay.
I also have some photographs that, uh, I'd like to maybe share.
That, now, now, now we've crossed over into testimony.
That testimony, sorry.
The photographs I have, and I'm just gonna mention them, show an existing, let me back up a minute, there's a development called Bitmore Circle, there's a bunch of neighbors here.
Mr. Baker.
There's a bunch of neighbors here from Bitmore Circle. When they built that property, they had the foresightiness to put an emergency access road between Farm Road and Bitmore Circle Road, I don't know what it's called. Uh, and underneath that is a, the purpose of that emergency access road is because they had floods in the past, and the mayor would probably know this, where the Royce Brook has flooded back onto Valley Road, so they had the foresightiness to build a emergency access road. And underneath that access road is a culvert, and the drainage from that culvert, uh, the drainage from the back of Bitmore Circle and, uh, the proposed property, or the property that was questioned, uh, drains through the, uh, through that culvert, and I went out there the other day, just for yucks, after we had two inches of rain in 12 hours, and it was gushing. So there is some water in the back of that property that has to be, uh, dispensed, get rid of somehow, and I guess the engineer has a plan for that. And it also floods out my property. So you can't take the photographs, they're nice. Uh, just about the trees, I know you, you realize that, yes, there's a hardship, mitigation, whatever. Uh, you know, because I'm, it's near a deer to me, I looked at how much water a mature oak tree absorbs in a 24-hour period. Happens to be 50 gallons of water. Uh, you're gonna take down all these mature chewed trees, and I don't know if you ever cut a, a grapevine, these wild grapevines, but if you cut one, the water pours out of them, and that's what that property is full. Uh, wild grapevines, a number of different trees, and I think Mr. Ford has a whole list of them. Uh, and I guess the last thing I just wanted to mention was, uh, the emergent, I don't know, I guess you got a tool from the fire department or whatever, on the emergency access road, I'm sorry, on the driveway, but the, the applicant's home is in the back of the property, the first one that I understand is in the northeast corner, and, uh, you know, you're dealing with a 25-foot-wide road driveway, uh, and if there's any vehicles that happen to be parked on that driveway, a no fire truck, uh, and possibly, uh, emergency vehicles would be able to get access to that property. You mentioned they have a grandparents that would be living in the, in the home, uh, I can certainly understand that when we get older, we fall down, ambulances, et cetera, would have to go into that property through this road, and there'd have to be some form of identification that this property or this driveway exists, so an emergency vehicle knows where to them. So, you know, I just got to tell you, um, and I, it's not against anybody, uh, you know, also, I try to be a peaceful person, uh, but I just, I would miss my boots, if you would, and, uh, you know, I, I know the people behind me are concerned about, again, the runoff, and as we start to build other houses, and now we need drain off from those homes, it runs into other people's homes, so, uh, you know, I did something else today, and I, and I didn't get an answer, uh, there's a piece of property that has sold, actually, I understand, or is under contract. On Valley Road, I was gonna give the, the applicants a proposal, it's a quite large piece of property, uh, it's currently under contract, I don't know how many acres, I asked those questions, and they wanted me to call the, another agent, and I just said, well, oh, well. Uh, that's all I have, I thank you for listening to my stuff, that's all.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any additional comments from the public? Come to the mic, sorry.
Greg Thompson, One Stone Drive, are you as a board allowed to consider all that activity relevant to each other's activity? In other words, you've got one, two, three projects going on right next to each other, and they all affect each other. Are you able to look at those within each other and see how your decision will be affected based upon the other things going on?
What three projects are you talking about?
The, the one question right here.
Okay.
The house in the middle, which was just sold, is going through a proposal for modification, um, enlargement, you know what I'm saying, relevant, that they're basically gonna, from my best understanding, I may be wrong, but I believe that they're going to basically totally redo that house from what I'm seeing. So that's, house is gonna be totally redone. And then next to that, you have the five houses, which are proposed to be going up on an extension of stolen. So basically, that whole length of Valley Road, by Farm Road, I should say, between Valley and Triangle, is gonna have nine new homes in the next, whatever building period goes on. I'm just, you know, I don't know if you're allowed to look at that, the effects of everything on each other, and how this makes a decision factor. Take into also the fact of that, what your concerns are for the road itself, what you're doing with Brown Road, when that's gonna be done, how that traffic that comes through there from the back is gonna be affected, what it all means. You know, these are all inter, interrelated projects that affect each other, and I don't know how you look into all that into consideration in total, when you decide how you wanna do, or what you wanna allow, or how you wanna let people up. So that's a tough part of your job, I'm just asking that question. Okay?
So Counsel, you wanna answer that, or? It's a consideration by the board as part of the overall planning situation, but no one gets a benefit or a detriment depending on where they fall within the per, within the line, i.e., somebody gets before a board, or somebody gets before the construction department first, doesn't give them necessarily priority over others within the concept. It is something the board has to look at, but it is not by any means determinative.
But you have, I...
Yeah, I, I understand your point, but I, the, what I, the, we, we have to look at, if, if there is in combination, you know, some type of negative impacts or material degree. I can honestly say, generally, a, a development that's got two or three lots in it, it's hard to get to the, to raise to the level that there's material impact to, to the surrounding areas, assuming you have the stormwater runoff issue dealt with, and that you have the fire safety access covered, and those kind of, you know, so, I, I, I'm not sure, you know...
Well, you've got, I'm saying you've got nine homes being put within, within 10 adjacent acres.
Yep.
You know, that's what, what it comes down to. That's what you have going on there.
Each one meets their requirements indefinitely.
Yeah. It's not, it's not, I mean, I'm sure it's not uncommon.
I mean, one, that's more than a, a lot an acre, right?
We have, no, I, I'm saying, just far as you're looking at how many trees are being taken down, one the other, what do they do, where does the water run here, where does one engineer and the folks that I say, let somebody else to say, what are one guy's assumptions, what are the other guy's assumptions? Are they, are they equivalent, are they congruent, do they, do they, you know, do they contradict each other? You know, that, that's all I'm saying, considering with the people from, from Bitmore Circles, they're concerned about both of these properties back over the Bitmores. All this rolls that way. Plus, you've got access to that road, you got one way in, one way out, and the concern for commercial traffic. Oh gee, if I'm adding nine homes, 18 vehicles, this shouldn't be much, but what does it need relative to that? You've got a quarter-mile stretch, which is going between Valley and Triangle, coming down that corner, one way in, one way out, this gets closed, I can't go this way, can't go that way. You look at how you're detouring vehicles while you're building 206. I know you can't consider that, but I'm just saying that that is a factor, you know, you've seen it already, of how your Valley's gonna be closed, because you'll be doing Valley with a jug handle, what, that's gonna take you two, three years? Now you're gonna be routing people down, 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 uh, down Triangle to the corner of Farms, to the corner of Farms, to Royce Field, to, to, uh, to Sparkway.
Well, I'll just say Valley Road's not to be closed for two or three years. The whole, the whole project's gonna take two, three years, you'll be closed for a very demanding piece of time. Well, let's, let's not say two or three years, Mr. Thompson, okay? Just to be fair, that, that Valley Road will not be closed for two or three years.
Well, see what happens. All right, thank you.
Any additional comments? Okay, close?
Close.
So a motion to close?
Motion closed.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, Counselor?
You have an application, members of the board before you, seeking preliminary and final major site subdivision approval with seek bolt variances and waivers to subdivide 3.883 acres into three residential lots, with associated improvements on property in the R residential zone. the R residential zone. This includes an agreement by the applicant to place a 50-foot conservation easement to the rear of the two lots proposed at the rear of the site. The agreement to meet all the conditions of both the Panoni memo, the Panoni memo, the Maskey memo, and the Weniger memo, with the exception of Mr. DeSessa's comments related to the private versus public road, and the need to reconfigure the potential stormwater issues related to number two of Mr. DeSessa's memo related to stormwater. There is a request for an economic hardship waiver that is up to the board where they want to grant that economic hardship waiver related to the tree mitigation. The requirement is for all applications to satisfy all outside agencies, including but not limited to the Somerset County Planning Board, the Delaware River Canal Commission, the Union Somerset Soil Conservation District, to meet the requirements made by the Environmental Commission, that a maintenance plan be developed relative to the maintenance of the proposed stormwater system, including the grates and drains, and a report to the township each year by either homeowners association or those owners of the property who control those items, if there is only one homeowner, on an ongoing, on a yearly basis pursuant to the township ordinance, to limit the disturbance on the site to only where the first house and access will be necessary for the construction, as well as related items involving stormwater management, and that no other disturbance on the property will occur until such time as when and if there is additional construction on the property, or the requirement for additional grading to be made is approved by the board engineer and the township engineer, an easement designating the maintenance for the stormwater management, as well as for the road, a need for cross-access easements between the various property owners, they may not be necessary now, but will be as part of requirements, that the Hillsborough Township MUA review and approve the utility lines as proposed, and a street, the applicant has agreed to a street light at the end of this proposed private road on Farm Road relative to the access in terms of illumination that does not spill off into the neighbors' properties. I believe I've, well, that's the other issue. The issue is, what do you want to do about the, thank you, David, the sidewalk along Farm Road and street trees therein?
If it's being provided by the Lowsky subdivision as well.
Right. If it's Lowsky subdivision providing it, this applicant must provide it, but that is a decision to be made by the boards. So those are what had been discussed as possible conditions for the approval of this application. The board may choose to take action regarding the entire package as described, or may want to modify it, or may want to take other action relative to the application.
Okay. A couple of questions, Eric, before we, just our clarifications on that. One, that's really only one matter, the HOA, I know we have the requirement to ensure that there is a reporting once a year. Do we have the upfront responsibility to ensure that the HOA agreement is satisfactory to the township and has sufficient means to be able to undertake the actions at the HOA?
Means is another issue. The answer is, do we have an obligation to ensure that an HOA exists? I would also suggest, and I would ask applicants, counsel to agree as a condition, that if no HOA is ever created, that the property owner or owners are themselves responsible for all of the costs related to the road, the sewer, the stormwater system, et cetera. For example, if the applicant chooses never to sell any other of the property and simply decides to develop a 4,700-plus-or-minus-square-foot home, he's got all the responsibilities.
Absolutely, it's agreeable.
So I guess my question runs just a little deeper in terms of, one, if an HOA is created, we have the right to review and approve the HOA. In terms of, are we obligated to check to see if there's enough money available for them to do the applicable projects? The answer, I don't believe, is within your purview. It may be in the township committee's purview, but it's not in this board's purview. Okay.
Mr. Bernstein, I may ask a question. If a homeowner does not, I mean, he will, but the extent he failed to do any of that, then does not, under the township ordinance, have the right to provide certain, not services, but certain work and kind of lean on the property?
That is generally the case, Mr. Stoll, on anything, but this municipality, like so many others, tries very hard not to get into somebody else's maintenance business. I.e., yes, that is always an option available pursuant to state law, it is not an option this township necessarily likes to engender, nor leave people with the impression that they should be considering that.
So given the, the limited number of participants in the HOA, is there, do we have the ability to say that there has to be, that the HOA has to provide some type of escrow or other?
That could be part of the HOA agreement.
If I may, Mr. Bernstein, if there's, there will be an HOA, but I have no problem with a recordable document that says, in the event there is not an HOA, for whatever reason, that the property owner, owners will have the obligation to absorb all of the expenses you indicated earlier.
Mr. Stoll, with all due respect, I know we all so love using that phrase, right now, your client's plans are to build a house on this lot. If for whatever reason he chooses, his wife decides that the house is not big enough and he wants to expand it, or he decides he likes having three acres of land and a 4,700 square foot, you'll never have an HOA. So I think the issue is the presumption that there will be one, presumes three lots being built and three homes. In the absence of three lots and three homes, people still have an obligation. So...
Agreed.
Okay. So Eric, getting back, we talked about this economic hardship waiver, and obviously, what I do professionally is we trust but verify. Is there a way that at the time construction, that we actually get estimates, real estimates? Because I don't know how this was arrived at, where these came from, because I assume someone's going to eventually have to go for some type of a loan or something, and then really get some cost estimates into here, that we actually have proof, and that this is actually a starting point, but it's a variable until we actually break ground, and that this, you know, the obligation may increase once, you know, the realities of construction does begin.
Yeah, to some extent, the costs are verified by, in this case, Drew's calculations, because he has to do up calculations to base the bond estimates on. I don't think, you know, it's, we...
So it's on Drew, then?
Yeah. Well, not entirely.
Because if you find a contractor has $100 a square foot...
Normally, for the bonding, we aren't taking into account the homes, right, it's just the improvements. So, yeah, I'm not going to, I'm going to, we'll probably check all the other site costs, so as far as that goes.
So the $600,000 you're going to cover, so we still got the question on the 1.4 mil.
I mean, that's normally not a bondable thing, but we could certainly, you know, review that, and, you know, but we feel it's reasonable.
Yeah, I mean, short of, and then this is a, you know, we have these requests often, short of us hiring a contractor, construction estimator, to do our own estimates, we tend to take the applicant's word for it, if you will. Obviously, the engineer, board engineer has a sense of whether or not it's reasonable. Will the costs go up if they build two or three years from now? Possibly, but we're not set up for that kind of system where we can track any development over that much period of time, and where they have to come in when they get their building permit and say, well, it was originally calculated at this, now it's, now it's here. It's...
No, I understand, well, okay, maybe not time to, but I want to get some verification here, these estimates came from somewhere.
Mr. Chairman, without spending a lot of time at this hour, I remind you all that this whole economic hardship waiver relates to the number of trees that an applicant has to replace on a site. And what they're telling you, and these, and I'm not an engineer or planner, so I'll play the lawyer here, is it's going to cost me too much to do what I want to do, so what I want you to do is tell me I don't have to spend that much on trees. That's your call. That, your call being the board's call. The board may say, look, it may cost you $20 million to develop this property, we still want the trees planted. It's a waiver, it is not mandatory, it is optional, and we go through this periodically, and we have in the 20-plus years I've been the board attorney, where the board gets these, everybody, I don't, I can't remember the last time an applicant with less than a one-lot subdivision came in and didn't ask for an economic hardship waiver relative to trees. Doesn't mean you have to grant it, whether you verify it's $2 million, $3 million, $10 million, or $20 million. The issue is, do you want them to replace trees? And that's what the waiver is. I don't have, because I'm going to spend all, ostensibly, correct me if I'm wrong here, I'm spending all this money to do this, I don't have enough money to spend on trees. That's the bottom line of the economic hardship waiver. So whether you verify it or not doesn't underlie the other issue, which is whether or not you decide there's a need for more trees.
Okay. Can I leave it up to anyone else? Are we good with this estimate or verification?
As long as it's verified by the engineer.
Okay. So Drew, we're going to put in you to verify.
Just at least...
As best you can.
Yeah.
Okay.
I have a question relative to this. If two houses aren't going to be built, three, if two are not going to be built, doesn't it change the formula one way or the other?
Because I got the approval for all three, so...
Well, I think the assumption is that they would build it, they're going to base the, the construction cost on the entire project.
Project, whether it's done five years from now or...
But I will remind the board, there is a condition agreed upon by the applicant that no more trees that will need to be taken down, the need to be for the improvements, and the house in question will be taken down, with the exception of drainage-related items. So it is incumbent on, I hate to say Mr. DeSessa and the township engineer and the construction department, to make sure that we don't end up with a clear cut.
Right. And Drew, just for clarification, I'm getting back with the stormwater management system. You don't, in your opinion, you don't see any additional runoff heading off into the, into the development behind the Dittmar Circle area?
No, they are capturing the disturbed area and then redirecting it into their stormwater system and into their intention base.
Within the site?
Typical and normal design.
Okay.
Which is not being done at this time, is it?
Well, right, no, right now, it's...
It's an open lot where it rolls, and it flows where it flows.
Right.
I guess I would have to ask for, if a homeowner would be agreeable to this, but if that would be, eventually, they would need to start developing homes, would they do the house closest to Farm Road first, preserving the backside of the lot to last home? If at all, to preserve that three acre?
Can I, Michael, can I ask you to put the exhibit up on the screen? So I think for the purposes of...
I missed a question, Mayor.
Well, I just want Mr. Ford to put the screen up so Mr., the mayor can indicate what I believe he's asking for. So if you can put A1 back up, please, Michael. David, we turn the TV back on. Yeah, so we can stop watching the Packers game.
Because the homes, homes aren't numbered.
Okay.
So the house that they're building would be the northeast house, correct?
Correct.
Which is part of the three acre, which would be the house directly below it? And then you have the house closest to Farm Road. So would it be possible to develop, if it should be all three homes being sold, do the house further back last as to preserve the lot size?
Well, Mayor, you aren't going to be disingenuous, and you're saying if all three are going to be built?
Well, you know, it's...
Well, I think the answer, the question really, Mr. Stoll, is if your client's going to build the first house...
Yes.
The board is asking the question, would he then agree that whoever builds the second house, that second house is the one on Farm Road?
All right.
So the second house has to be the closest house?
That's what's being asked, sir. It doesn't mean you have to agree.
That's fine.
Okay.
So what I had to ask, I find...
Sure. So I figured you had to ask. So as conditional approval, they would, the first house that would be developed by themselves would be the house closest to Farm Road?
Well, the first house that would be developed on the site after theirs would be the one closest to Farm Road.
The second house. You get your dream house first, and then after that. Thank you.
Any additional comments from the board, questions? This is our last bite at the apple before we take a vote. Okay. All right. Eric, do you want to summarize one more time?
No.
Better yet, does anyone, does anyone need something?
The only item that was added to my list of, that I went before, was the request made by the mayor, which the applicant agreed to, that if the second lot is ultimately developed after the applicant's proposed home, it would be the lot on, fronting on Farm Road before the lot behind it is developed.
Lot, both lots, 3.04.
Okay. And Drew's going to verify costs.
And Drew will verify the cost for the purposes of the economic hardship waiver.
And adjustments accordingly. Okay. All right, so with that, it's been summarized, I will entertain a motion of approval, the resolution, or not, as outlined by Eric. I'll make the motion.
Delkor makes the motion.
On a second.
Lapony seconds.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Mr. Wagner?
Yes.
Mr. Pison?
Yes.
Mr. Santa Marita?
Yes.
Mr. Scobo?
Yes.
Mr. Hashtag?
Yes.
Mr. Delkor?
Yes.
Mr. Lapony?
Yes.
Vice Chair Julian?
Yes.
Chairman Sorakian?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Congressman, thank you very much for your time and for the approval. My client, too, appreciate it.
Thank you. So, next, Neil, sit down. David, other than what I see here, our next meeting is next Thursday on the 4th?
November 4th, that's correct.
And we have that agenda filled, right?
That's for the adoption, consideration and adoption of the housing element to the master plan.
Okay. But do we have an applicant, or is it...
No, just the housing element.
So this will be a...
There will be a presentation by Gene Beam, our housing consultant.
Okay, so it'll be a relatively short meeting, and... Okay. I won't touch the money. Okay, so with that, there we go.
Second.
One in favor?
Aye.
Hillsborough, New Jersey, celebrating 250 years of a rich history.
Hi, I'm Mayor Sean Lapony, and I'm proud to showcase Hillsborough, one of the best places to live in America.
From the preserved farms that helped feed the world, to the Van de Veer House, to the John R. Stott's House, restored and currently utilized for business, to the magnificent and world-famous Duke Farms, where you can walk or ride a bike through their historic grounds, to the iconic Nishanik Reformed Church. And just down the road is our fabulous Nishanik Mill, located right on the picturesque Rowerton River. You're invited to visit Hillsborough, a great place to live, work, play, and do business anytime, and experience over 250 years of proud history in Hillsborough, New Jersey.